Good evening. It's being January 20th, 2022. This is the Planning Commission. This meeting is being audio and videotaped for Mass General Law. Gentlemen, please introduce yourself, starting with Doug.
Dr. Montal, Town Planner.
Dave Viggen, member.
Rick Ellis, member.
Brian DeChamps, member.
Mark Sinorizio, member, and our secretary is?
Paul Sullivan.
Paul Sullivan, thank you. With that, 6:30 appointments, joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, appointment of Commissioner Nello's open term. Appointment will expire May 13th, 2022. At such time, the term will expire and will be on the annual town election ballot. Reviewer matters presented, voters may be taken. I'll hand it over to you, Doug.
Yep, so we have a joint meeting. We have members of the Board of Selectmen here today. Pretty much, we received two letters of interest for Melo's open seat. One of the candidates actually isn't a current resident of the Cushinget. And according to the town's charter, to be on the Planning Commission, you have to be a resident of the Cushinget. The gentleman, Mark Francois, submitted a letter. I believe he is an excellent candidate for the open spot on the Planning Commission. I have his letter of interest here that he submitted, if the board would like to review it. I know Dave has had the opportunity to review the letter already. There is anything from the Board of Selectmen? Anything you'd like to say, Mark? Anything the board would like to say?
Let's see, while we're here, we got Chairman of the Board of Selectmen on Zoom. Would you like to say anything, Dave?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to open this Board of Selectmen's meeting, saying that today is January 20th, 2022, it is 6:30, 8:00 PM. And do I have a motion to open the meeting? I'm moving. And I will second on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Now, the Board of Selectmen is fully aware of the situation that the Planning Board has, and we're here tonight to put our nomination for the position forward, I should say. Put our nomination forward.
Gentlemen on the board, any questions?
I guess, that's not really a question, it's just how, I mean, Mark, is this Mark, is this the Mark Francois that has the application in front of the Planning Board at this time on Perry Hill?
That is correct.
I mean, I would just ask him how he would intend to handle that situation. That's a little cumbersome for me, to have somebody sitting on the board, and now we've got to make decisions that can cost the proponent, you know, serious dollars at times. It just puts me in, I feel it puts me in an unusual position, one that I'm really not totally comfortable with. I'd like to hear what Mark's view of the thing is.
Well, if you want to step up to the podium, I believe there's a microphone right there, so everybody could hear you, please. Please be kind to introduce yourself, we know who that handsome face is, but people out in TV land don't know you, so.
Mark Francois, Perry Hill Road. To answer your question, anything that would come up regarding my project, I'd obviously have to recuse myself. I was under the assumption that my project has gone through the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has approved my project as it stands. Right now, I do have an open situation in a butter, that the attorneys are involved at the moment. I'm under the impression, also speaking with Doug, that that will be resolved shortly, just between me and them, the two parties. Besides that, I'm just like any other citizen that serves on any of the other boards, whether I have a piece of land or not, I feel that I'm just like anybody else. The last two years that my project, I've been waiting for my project to get approved, I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot, sitting in all the meetings, not only with my project, but sitting in and listening to other projects. And I feel at this time that is a good opportunity for me to help serve my community, and just try to help and be a fifth member of the board, which for some time now, the board has been missing people at times. And I just feel that it's a good opportunity to help and serve my community.
You're not going to get mad at me if something comes up and I have to say something that's going to cost you money, I guess that's a simple way to put it.
Well, no.
And again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, you know, I like to work with people, and that can be an uncomfortable situation. And I would not want to make, this position is bad enough as it is in terms of making enemies. I mean, typically, I mean, if it's a neighbor that is around a project, they want the Planning Board to say no. If it's a proponent that wants to do something, whether it's a solar array, or a subdivision, or Form A, they want the Planning Board to say yes. So, we tend to generate enemies regardless of how we vote on things, and I just don't want to make another one, Mark, that's all. You know, I mean, quite frankly, you know, I would hope that, I don't have a problem with you being a member, I would just hope that whatever comes up, it's not going to create another enemy for me. You know, I've been in town a long time, too long, I guess, but you understand.
I do understand. And the way I see things is, this town has a book of rules. There are bylaws. There are rules for everything, whether it's this board, you know, every, you know, the zoning commission, every commission has rules. And does the board have leeway in the gray area, so to speak? Yes, they do, all boards do, I understand that. But I would just expect this board and any other board to go by the bylaws. And as long as somebody, you know, goes by the bylaws and everything's, you know, to the up and up, there shouldn't be any enemies being made. It should be, you know, a yes or a no by the bylaw. Again, are there gray areas? Sure.
Those are the ones that create the problems.
No, I understand, I understand. But the gray area can only go so far, you know, the gray area can only go so far, so the person, me, you, anybody here, has to be within the bylaws, so.
I understand.
With that, gentlemen on the board, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please feel free, sir.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Francois. Mark, have you pulled papers for the election coming up?
I have pulled papers for the election coming up. I haven't filled them out, and I need to get X amount of signatures that I haven't gotten yet, but yes, I have been to the town clerk, and I have pulled papers.
So it's your intention to run for the open seat of the Board of Selectmen on the Planning Board?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Anybody else? So we have a motion from the Selectmen that they would like to approve this, is that correct? David? Both, David?
Motion would be from the Board of Selectmen to nominate Mark Francois for the open seat on the Planning Board.
Gentlemen on the Planning Board.
Do I have a motion for that? Second. Well, they got a motion, correct?
You have a motion and a second?
And I'll second that, all in favor?
It's you guys.
Aye.
It's all of us, actually.
Mr. Wong. Well, I believe we have to have--
Now, I go to the Planning Board and ask here.
But we do have to have a roll call vote. So we have a nomination for Mr. Francois for the open seat on the Planning Board. Roll call vote, Mr. Wonga.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, now I believe it comes to us. Gentlemen on the board, is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept Mr. Francois as the applicant.
Is there a second?
A second, sir.
All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, from the letter I've received from Pam LaFonny, we need to have a roll call vote on the Planning Board also.
I'll take care of that, roll call vote. Rick Ellis?
Yes.
Brian DeChamps?
Yes.
Mark Sinorizio, yes. David, you have to reclusive yourself for this?
I'm going to reclusive myself for a minute.
Okay. Three out of five, the motion passes. Welcome to the board, Mark.
Thank you.
Get your seat, sit down. No. Get sworn in.
Thank you.
With that--
Very good, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, we'll close the Selectmen's portion of the meeting. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, I know you're busy, we appreciate it. Stay warm.
So from the Board of Selectmen, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm moving. And I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We will continue on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't think he got it, he needs to, he needs to grab a seat and come here.
He has to be sworn in first.
Oh, he can't sit in the meeting?
No.
I thought he couldn't.
He's not a member until he's sworn in.
Yeah, he's sworn in first.
Okay.
With that, we'll continue on. We have to make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a motion to open the Planning Board meeting?
Motion to open.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, oh, go ahead. Wait, what?
Take an intermission so I can switch Zooms.
Okay, sorry, we just need to take a quick intermission because there's a different Zoom leak for the--
Take a quick intermission so they can come off Zoom and go into the regular meeting. We'll tell you when we'll be right back.
There's also a quick note, there's a different Zoom leak for the Planning Board meeting itself, that's on the Planning Board agenda, which can be viewed on the Cushinget's website.
Okay, back from our commercial break from Zoom. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion open. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, what do you have on the agenda, Doug?
Well, starting in business, Jim Merritt, old commissioner, he issued a stormwater letter, well, a letter pretty much addressing stormwater, and the transfer of authority to conservation commission that the Planning Board undertook. I don't know if the board has had a chance to review the letter and read it over. It's pretty much addressing that. He believes that we should address the language that's in the bylaws currently to reflect the change that has been made.
We do have to do that, period, right?
From my understanding, and I don't know if Pat's on the Zoom call currently, but we were, from speaking to town council, that we have done it the proper way, but we are going to be making stormwater changes to the bylaws, so it's something that we are willing to change regardless.
So we could do it at the Planning Board level, or do we have to go to town meeting?
We're going to have to go to town meeting for that.
Okay.
But it can all be done at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, as long as the language is put in place, and we have an article on the law report.
Gentlemen, any questions? Had a chance to read the letter? Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, it sounds like just a--
Well, it's just, it's relinquishing--
Clean all of it, yeah.
You know, memorialize it by--
Relig which is the Town, the Planning Commission, out of being a stormwater agent, puts it on the conservation.
Right, which has already been voted.
Basic and simple, yeah. The bylaws should be changed to reflect some of the rules and regulations that people have when they have to go through stormwater permitting.
Sure. I make a motion, we have Doug draft an article for town meeting this summer.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Continue on, Doug?
Yes, so next we have the public hearing continuation for Isaiah on 165 Nice Lane. We had left off last meeting, there was a couple of updated visual barrier and landscaping plan, sent to the board.
There is a small typo in this letter. I'm not aware of any deep brook subdivision. And I'm sure, and I'm sure the original applicant would have, would find issue with that particular wording. It is deep brook, obviously.
Thank you, sir. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, then you can stand by that podium if you want, I think there's a microphone right there, sir.
I'm Roy Morrison, the managing partner of Sun Partner Solar. I know Robert Nazir has been talking to before, and so I'm, Robert was the other managing partner, so I'm taking over for Robert on it. So as I understood it, we have two outstanding issues for the Planning Board. One was the vegetative screen, and the other is decommissioning.
Yes.
And we just received a letter from S.W. Cole that found the decommissioning plan was good, and he decided we should add a two and a half percent escalator, which I think is excessive, but we accept that. And the information that I handed out on the right side, there's a number of documents I'd just like to talk about to the board that you can review, that suggests the appropriate level of decommissioning funds is substantially below what we agreed to. So I just want to, in general, should we start talking about the vegetative screen or decommissioning?
Let's talk about the screening first, then we can go on to decommissioning.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Sure.
Go right ahead.
So--
Gentlemen, okay with you guys?
Yep.
At the last meeting, it was suggested that the spacing was too large between the plants, so working with the landscape architect, we couldn't be here tonight because he had a conflict, so I've become a landscape architect. My experience with landscape architecture came from when I was a sustainability director at SNHU, and basically, the landscape architect had no power whatsoever. So, but, so essentially, we, in discussions with Greg, that he thought that an eight-foot spacing as opposed to 10 feet was appropriate, and that would maximize the healthy growth of the vegetative screen. I heard some reaction to that, was two things. One, that some people did not like white pine. A lot of people don't like white pine, so we can certainly substitute another plant for white pine. And the other was, that the level of coverage was not sufficient, and that there was a desire for a two to three foot berm. And if the Planning Board wants that to happen, we can do that as well. We can get rid of white pine and use other species to replace it, and we can put a two to three foot berm. The other alternative was suggested to me by Teddy Chopper, was, if the Planning Board wants to consider that, was to use a slat system on the fence and plant that with ivy. I don't know if the Planning Board is interested in that, but it's a certain, it's an alternative, if it's acceptable. If not, maybe have the plant version.
I just had my hesitations about that because of the, the seller, the abiding property owner, and their view from her portions of the backyard. She had voiced her complaints about it, and I just want to keep her in mind when we're thinking about that. I do like the idea of the two to three foot berm. I feel like if the spacing is done correctly, and the species of trees are done correctly, it does look nice, especially if the sizing is done properly. I definitely look to hear any other suggestions.
Gentlemen on the board, any questions?
I mean, would it be, I mean, right now, we've got the fence, and then we've got the vegetation around it, would it be possible to, let's see, how do I put this? I would think that because it's going to take a while for the vegetative screen to mature, that maybe it's something at least in the order of a four foot high berm, with the, with the plantings done on the top of the berm, is probably something I would be looking at a little more favorable. At that, with that done, then there really won't be an issue with slats on the fence, and especially nylon slats that have got a four or five year lifespan. I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I, the, some of the installations that I've seen, considering the panels are in the order of 10 feet high, I mean, a six foot high berm with the planting on top of it is, will probably screen it better in the long run, but I would, I would be willing to look at a four foot high berm with the plantings on the top of it, equally spaced, and some kind of performance guarantee, such that after two to five years, whatever the timing may be, whatever plants are dead or dying will be replaced. So it would be an additional monetary consideration there to guarantee that we're not arguing about dead plants after a year and a half, which has happened on another site.
Understood, in principle, it makes sense to review, you know, the performance of the system every couple of years. You know, just, I mean, that's, that's one of the principles of effective management of operating systems, that everything is maintained in operational condition. You know, that's the same for the inverters, the panels, the landscaping.
In terms of the things that make money, I mean, absolutely, but when you get down to something like landscaping, that doesn't generate any revenue, it's just an additional cost to keep the facility going, and--
We budgeted for that.
It's going to, it will be more difficult for us to get that corrected. I mean, the one facility that I think of is in Freetown? Yeah, Freetown, by the city in New Bedford. And, I mean, half the, there are some tremendous plants there, but half of them are dead now. And the only effective screen really is this monstrous A.I., looks like an eight to 10 foot high berm they put around the place. So, you know, there needs to be some mechanism for us to make sure that we have leverage to get replanting done. And that's, that's my only comment. You know, if it's something that you'd rather depend more on a higher berm, well, then at least we don't have to worry about plants dying on that. Again, we look to the, we look to the proponent to give us a proposal. I think honestly, a three foot high berm with plantings at eight foot apart, that are going to take in the order of five to 10 years to mature, that's probably a little light on my, from my perspective. But that's just me. I mean, you've got four, three other members--
We had talked about, you agree upon a four foot berm, sir? Correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
The trees make a difference? I see there's three, four different types of trees. You want spaced eight feet, eight feet apart? That's one of the spaces?
Yeah, that's what they're, yeah. Eight feet would be better.
Four feet, four foot berm with eight foot apart trees. We all agree, gentlemen? Anybody else on the board want to say anything?
And no white pines. They don't really make a very good--
White pine?
I mean, they don't, and the only way to get some dense growth on a white pine is you've got to go in there, and you've got to literally trim each tree. I mean, they do that for Christmas trees, and they're nice and thick, and they look great, but the ones that just grow, they tend to grow up, and the branches are pretty widely spaced.
I used to be in the Christmas tree business. That's correct, that, you know, we would trim the trees every year, so they bush out. You know, and one of the things, I think, that the lease includes a payment to Teddy to do vegetation management, as part of, we're paying him to cut grass and to help maintain trees, so he will water, so in other words, it's built in, not, the process that we have is that we're concerned about that, and we're budgeted for that, and that's part of, already part of what we're planning to do. You know, I think it's fine, you know, to--
So which tree do we, do we want in particular, one particular tree that you want to pick out, so we can nail this down?
Well, I mean, do you still want to do the white pines?
No.
And, okay. And commit to, you know, literally trimming each tree, you know, to get them bushy and make a good--
That's our intention, is to trim trees, because we, you know, lower and see--
Okay, which tree do we want? You have an American holly, a white spruce, or a giant green everbide?
Those three would be fine, just don't do the white pines.
Yeah, just scratch, scratch, they have a layout where they, they go five of these, seven of these.
I see these six to seven feet so many--
They do them in clusters, so there's a variety, just scratch out that one, and then change the, reshuffle the deck with the rest of them. The only, I want to make note about the berm. There's a berm that was built for a solar farm on Wing Lane. It, the top is three or four feet wide, it's about six feet tall. You know, someday those trees are going to topple, because the berms aren't wide enough. So I see you have staggered, staggered layout for the trees, which is good, but the berm needs to be appropriately width, you know, same, proper width, not something four feet in the top, four feet tall.
Right, it'll be designed by the landscape architect who understands that. You know, it would be flat with sufficient--
We want a good cross section to show--
Right.
What, will we drive out there and you should be able to see it? Any common person who knows?
We're going to have some high school kids with a ditch witch and let them know. No--
That might, that might be a better choice than a contractor who's got the low price bid to install it.
So gentlemen, what are we agreeing upon here, so you can keep this project moving along?
Like Dave said, just scratch out the white pine, and let them reshuffle everything to, into those other spaces.
So the white pines, there was supposed to be 21 of them, so you have to pick up 21 of the other trees?
Precisely.
Correct.
Just balance it out.
Okay. We agree upon that?
Yep.
Everybody happy with that? Three species.
Same number of trees, just a different--
Please introduce yourself, miss, who you are.
My name is Joanne Chopper. I live right across the street from that, and I thought we spoke about having them six feet apart, the trees, at the last meeting.
These were staggered, I don't have a minutes from the last meeting.
I think the problem is with these types of trees, if you put them too close, it's going to inhibit the growth, because they, these are trees that will grow fat and full, and then they'll end up meshing together, but if you, you could do that for maybe an everbide, but the little giants, you really don't want to put them that close, you want to give them room to breathe and grow.
Their roots will just choke each other, is all it's going to do, yeah.
All right, well, now, I just, you know--
And they have a landscape architect who's, you know, he's saying it's kind of as close as we really want to go, and I researched the growth of the trees, they should grow good, as long as they're big, you know, and as long as they're maintained, so, and we're going to, you will, you will provide a bond, right? We're looking, five year bond is what we talked about in the past, for the growth of these trees, and then the bond can be released?
Yes.
Surety on the landscaping?
Yes.
We haven't submitted that, sorry about that, Frank.
Oh, I have not heard that before.
We did discuss that.
Yeah, we did, we did discuss that. I mean, that's the problem, I mean, what's our leverage if half the trees die? You know, we have, as a board, we have none. I mean, you have your contract, and, you know, but we're not party to that, and we don't have any enforcement authority over getting things replanted. Again, the one that's, the one, the ones that are in Freetown, half the trees are dead, and that's, that's, that's it. There's nothing else happening there, I--
It might have been a previous meeting, that discussion about the bond. No, it was last meeting.
It could have been two meetings ago, I think.
No, it was last meeting.
That was a point of discussion, was, you know, having some financial ability to make sure that things get replanted. You know, and a five year time limit seemed reasonable. I mean, if the stuff's not, the stuff should grow in by five years, but before that time, there'll be some that need to be replaced the first year, some that need to be replaced the second year, and maybe a few that need to be replaced the-- the second year, and maybe a few that need to be replaced the third year, and, and we just want to make sure that gets done, that's all.
That's, I agree. That's fine. Not a problem. You know, bonds are, are fine.
I mean, a, a bond should be just fine for, you know, that purpose. I mean, it's got a very limited timeframe on it, and we don't have to worry about the thing lapsing.
We agree upon the price of the bond, or the price of the trees, or how do you want to, what do you want to put a bond up for, 20 grand?
Yeah, it seems like ought to be in that, in that range. A $20,000 bond to guarantee that the dead trees get replanted as required.
Is that all set with that?
To run for a five-year time period.
It's fine.
Is that okay with you, sir?
It's, it's fine.
Good. We're all set with that? So, we got this down pat now?
One question.
Please introduce yourself, who you are, sir.
Grew up a nice layer across the street. How tall are these trees going to be?
They're starting out, it looks like on, according to this, they're starting out at six and seven feet, uh...
On top of the berm?
Yes.
And, and that, that has been an issue on another project, is six-foot plants turn into two-to-three-foot plants? You know, that, that will be a problem also if, if that is the case for this project.
Right, well, we're, we're going to do what we say we're going to do. Because our interest is, is to build projects, good projects, have people say, "That's a good project, and we want to build more projects." So, it's not a one-and-done situation. You know, so we, I'm, I'm interested in the environmental benefits of solar, and I'm also interested in keeping the, the community vigorous and happy of what, what's happening.
So, we got this down pat now, right?
I have one more question.
Okay, I'm trying to solidify this. Four-foot berm?
Yes.
Get rid of the white?
Yes. Uh, three of the same species.
And replace them with the others?
Yes. Five-year surety agreement.
For 20 years, man, yes. Okay. Any other questions?
Now, the landscaping, now, how are you going to guarantee that it's landscaped? Let's say they just like, say forget this, I'm not going to do it.
That's part of the decommissioning.
I don't know.
No, I mean, that's part, that's the reason for the bond.
Well, that's for the trees.
If they, if they don't do it, then we go after the bonding company, and they'll never get another bond with their bonding company.
So, that's a different bond than the bond for the trees?
There's two different bonds. Decommissioning and one for the trees.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Or two different financial agreements, I should say.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just one, one more question. I know he had mentioned that they have an agreement with one of the landowners doing landscaping. Now, these are two separate projects. Is he agreeing to do all of it on both projects or just his?
Could I ask him?
Uh, I believe he will do both of them.
Okay.
Could you get that in writing?
That would be a good idea.
That would be in the O and M plan.
And God forbid, what if they're unable to do it? What happens after that?
We, we hire someone to do it.
You hire someone?
Yeah, I mean, and so that, you know, so the, the lease is assigned with the, with the ability of the landowner to do the operation and maintenance on plants and cutting grass, and if not, we hire people to do it.
At, at what point do you hire people, like, is the grass?
Immediately.
Okay.
In other words, it's, you know, if someone says, "I can't do it," then we hire someone who does do it.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Any statements? We all set? We got what we, everybody's got? We know what we're going to do?
Um, then the decommissioning number on is the other point, what's that, 98?
I think it's two and a half percent escalator.
Yes.
Are you agreeable to the number that SWF says?
Yes, I'm agreeable. I think it's a, I think, I'm, I would agree to it. I think it's way too high, but if the board thinks that's what we need to do, we can do that. I'd just like to go through some of the, my understanding of why it's too high. Shall I do that?
You're entitled to, sir, go right ahead.
Okay. So, in the last, in, in this document, it says decommissioning solar panel system. Uh, it's the last. And this was written by NISERDA, which is the New York State. So, this is a solar guidebook, and on the, the second page, which is page 162, they have estimated cost of decommissioning. And then we've, in, highlighted, it said, "A ground mount, Table 1 provided estimates of ground mounted for two megawatt solar panel system based on estimates from the Massachusetts solar market." So, our system is less than a half a megawatt. And it's interesting, the estimated cost with a two-and-a-half percent inflation rate is $98,900 for a system that is at least several times the size, four times the size of what we're building now. So, there's, you know, so, and on the last page, or the next page, there's an example of a estimate from Next Stand, which is a Massachusetts company building a, a system in New York that's six and a half megawatts, and their number is 300,000. So, that system is 12 times the size and only three times the cost what's estimated. So, what, what I'm saying is, there's enormous safety margin in there for the town. And the final thing is, the last page, which is from the Federal Register, dealing with nuclear plants. And it says in here that if a licensee, on the next page, on page 988, it says, "A licensee has prepaid funds based on a specific example. They take credit for projected earnings on the paid decommissioning trust funds using up to a 2% annual rate of return from the time the project funds are collected." So, that suggests if we have to pay a, a cash amount to the town, we should get, it's reasonable to provide credit to us on the basis of a 2% escalator for what we deposit. So, if, if the town would accept a letter of credit or a bond, that's not a problem at all. If we have to pay $100,000 in cash almost, that's equal to more than 70%, 7% of the cost of building the system, and that's quite high.
I think our only challenge on that, sir, is that we don't make up that rule. It's the Finance Department that does that.
I, yeah, yeah, but I'll have to talk to Jasmine about that and what she'd be comfortable with taking at this point, just because she has got a lot going on.
We have some people that have left, and we have new personnel coming in in the Finance Department. So, allow Doug to talk to her on that.
That's great. I, I would like, you know, to be part of the, you know, I'm, I'm happy to discuss with the finance people about options. All, all I'm suggesting is, it would be easy to get a, a bond or a, a letter of credit, which generally costs between 1 and 3% of, of the cost. So, $100,000...
It's all up to her, we...
I understand.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Got any of that, Doug?
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah.
Gentlemen, you okay with that?
I'm not, I don't, I don't think I fully understand. Are you saying, are you suggesting that you'd, you'd be putting, you could put $60,000 cash in escrow account versus the $98,000 in a bond? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, what I'm suggesting is, if, if we are...
They want $98,000 cash. Is that correct, Doug?
If, if the town treasurer requires $98,000 cash in comparison to a, a bond?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's a question, right? But if, if the town would accept the bond instead of cash?
Right. Two questions. If the town will accept the bond or a letter of credit or whatever kind of credit instrument the town wants, we can provide. If the town wants money in cash, we would like to have the situation where we would put an amount that would increase by 2% so that we would, you know, example, deposit $60,000 or $50,000 instead of $95,000.
That's where I was going with it. That's where I, okay.
Right.
Seems reasonable.
It's up to them. We've tried different scenarios and stuff, and like I said, we have new personnel coming on, so I believe Doug and Jasmine can work that out.
Yep, absolutely.
Paul, you can give them a hand if you want. Okay, we all set with that, gentlemen?
I have another question too, sorry. Is that per property, because there's two separate properties, or is it for the whole project?
So, the, the bond can be assigned to both properties as long as that language is, is included in the bonding, if I understand correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, our approval or disapproval is based on the plan that's in front of us, which shows both properties.
Correct.
So, I can't imagine any scenario where a, a bond or a cash deposit is going to be applicable to just one. That's, that's not the way. If, if that were the, if they wanted to do something like that, then they would need two different sets of plans, they would need two separate, uh, two separate special permit processes, and we're, we're not doing that. It's, it's one special permit, and it's being treated as one parcel as a whole.
Right, and, and the town is the counterparty, is what I understand.
Excuse me?
The town is the counterparty, so the money comes to the town?
Uh, for the decommissioning funds?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so it's not, you know, in other words, if the, if the, the town, the money does not go to the landowners?
No, no, no. It, it's held, it's held in an account for the town.
Right.
And it protects the town of, of something was to happen to the property, the, you guys don't take care of the site, uh, something happens to your company?
Right.
Or whatever, whatever may happen, yeah?
Understood.
I mean, it's, it's, for all we know, the thing could get sold three or four times or more between now and 20 years out. You know, that's, that's the other thing that we have to take a look at, you know, and any kind of a bond that might be acceptable to the treasurer, I mean, there's got to be a mechanism to keep it in place for a minimum of 20 years, and then we have to have the authority to call it, you know, unless there's some other arrangement made. You know, it's, it's a little more complicated legally with the bond.
Yeah, no, actually, I, I did call over to Rochester in their planning department. She, the town planner over there, they have a spreadsheet, they're the ones who keep track of the bond when they're getting renewed, and the planning department's the one that keeps track of all of that there. So, that's something I'm going to have to follow up with the treasurers here and see if it's something that they would like us to start doing or if it's something they're capable of doing.
As, as long as there's a mechanism and we can keep track of it and we can extract money if there's a problem, I mean, hopefully there's no problems, you know, and then that's, then that's the end of it, but unfortunately, this is, it's kind of a moving target.
We're all set with this. When do you like to have the next meeting?
Uh, hold on, sorry.
I have a calendar. February 24th is a month away. Washington on the 17th.
Um, let's do the 17th. We, there might be something that comes up earlier than that that we might need to meet for.
It's okay. So, we'll put that on the agenda for the 17th?
17th, yes.
And you want to finalize this and get it all out of the way?
Yeah, I think it would just be the updated landscaping plan. Um, I'm going to draft the surety agreement, um, one for the decommissioning bond, and then one for the, um, the landscaping. Um, I would like to have, like, once I send them over to you, I'd like to have town council review the documents as well if that's, that's acceptable to you. Um, it's okay with the board, so.
Gentlemen, we don't have to vote on this, but you all set with it?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. With that, our next meeting will be the 17th. If you get together with Doug, he'll give you a time.
Great.
On the 17th, and we'll open that.
Thank you for your continued attention.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Will we ride along to it?
All right, just give me a moment. Yep. You ready? All right.
We're ready to go, are you?
Discussion, 88 Wing Lane Solar Resite Plan Deviation Request. I believe we're all rather familiar with this, and we have a few gentlemen in the audience to speak on their behalf.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen, gentlemen of the board.
Can you just briefly introduce yourselves, too?
My name is Worcester Dazir. I'm the Construction Project Manager with CVE in North America.
My name is Eric James. I'm with CS Energy. I know I've spoken with all of you a few times now, so nice to see everybody again.
And I also have with me, uh, my colleague, a solar system engineer, George Sade, with CVE in North America as well. We had sent in front of you, gentlemen of the board, a request of a site modification for our 88 Wing Lane project concerning, um, the visual barrier requirements. We had planted the trees and, and on, on top of the berms for that site, but, uh, because it would take some time for the trees to grow, uh, it was suggested that we put a temporary screening or visual barrier in terms of tops installed on, on the fence. And now we've, uh, installed all that, it's in place now, and that essentially should provide the temporary visual barrier for at least the next five years. And in addition to that, we, we propose a surety bond agreement with the town for the amount of $61,000 that would basically, if everything was to fall apart right now, it would cost us about $54,000 to plant all the trees, we do the berm, we do the fence. But we, we added an extra 10, 10% for inflation in case it costs more in the next two, three, five years to do the same. So, we would like to see if the board is satisfied with what we've put in place right now and, and request if we can have a permission to continue on with the project, because we understand that there might be a threat or a recommendation for season decess in the project. We would like to see if the board could vote to allow us to continue with the project now that we have the solution in place.
Um, and I've also spoken with Pat now that stormwater is under conservation. Um, that's going to be a separate issue from, from ours, and if they need to issue anything in terms of season decess, they're going to take care of that.
That goes through the CONCOM?
That, the stormwater issues will go through the CONCOM. Our season decess will, um, pretty much, it's left up to the visual barrier of the surety agreements in place, and the only thing is the new bond for the, the plantings.
Okay, well, we have the same question now, is what, what's an acceptable form of performance guarantee from...
We've already produced...
Our town accountant?
Yes, sorry, yes.
I mean, we're, we're, that's a problem for the town internally, is having the, the town administrator, accountant, whatever, agree that a bond, if there is a bond that you're proposing, then we need to see the wording of the bond.
Yep.
We need, we need a document for the town to review.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's been the primary problem with, with bonds at this point.
Yes.
Uh, if, if it's just cash, as long as that's in line with the decommissioning cost that's already been approved for that project, then I think we're, you know, that, that's another, that's another issue.
No, they, they've, they've satisfied their, their decommissioning cost for the site. They, they are proposing the $64,000 bond for the, the plantings themselves and the trees, uh, the trees, the fencing, the berm.
And, and we're using the exact same instrument that we produced for the actual decommissioning bond, and we, we produced the same document, which is in front of the board for, for approval. And basically, that's, uh, we will put the money on, onto escrow for the next 20 years if anything was to happen to the site, and we wouldn't, if we didn't take care of it, then you would have a, you know...
Yeah, I, again, this is nothing against your proposal specifically, but we're, we're trying to get the town administrator slash accountant to agree on, on a form of, of bond or a ref... get the town administrator slash accountant to agree on, on a form of, of bond or a form of cash security. We don't have that yet, so I can't, I mean, we can't give you the answer because we've asked the question to the people in town that are in charge of that. And we haven't got an answer back from them. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, I mean, more or less, and there are nu- uh, several other projects already have posted decommissioning and there are bonds in the account. There is a line, one, one product that has a line of credit in the account currently. So that's just something to keep in mind. The only thing that was an issue was the line of credit. Um, and I still need to talk to Jasmine about the line of credit, but I haven't heard a, a problem with the bond or cash at this time in terms of security for decommissioning.
Do you, do you, do we have a, an actual bond document from these people?
No.
That can be reviewed by, by town council and our town administrator?
What we have is the surety agreement, um, by the public, the general one that we would use for the decommissioning funds that the board would sign. Um, if, I can have town council review it if that's what you'd like. Um, I do not have anything in terms of bond language that they're gonna be submitting, um, at, at my desk or anything.
If, if I may ask, this, this surety agreement is the same one that's already in place for the, for the decommissioning one, for the decommissioning of the site. We've, 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 we've addressed this, uh, this document, the board signed, signed it and approved it. And that money is already in the score for the next twenty years. We're proposing to do the exact same thing, there is nothing that has changed, so I'm not sure if there would be any kind of change in, in this one, which is only for five years.
I guess, I guess would you be posting cash or you're gonna be posting a bond?
We're gonna post the cash.
Okay.
We just want you to agree that we can do the same that we did with the commissioning for, for the whole project.
Cash is king.
We realize that's what it would take because the process to get the bond is.
As long as the agreement is sufficient that we can leverage that money
Okay, yeah, yeah.
to get things fixed, that's all. Like dead, dead trees, lack of trees, two-foot trees instead of eight-foot trees, you know, all, all those kinds of things. Is, is the conservation commission and the building commissioner and you satisfied with the size and spacing of the plants that have been done out there?
Um, well, I mean, we spoke to Jim, we had actually a conference call with all of us, um, on board and I think the general consensus was that the visual barrier was satisfactory to, to the three, three of us.
Okay.
Um, obviously there's stormwater issues that they're still working out on the conservation end of things, but the, the two main concerns on our end, I, I feel like have been addressed.
Okay, okay, that's good, that's what I wanna hear. I mean, that's, that's what we've, you know, we depend on yourself, the building commissioner, you know, the highway commissioner, you know, to, to, to look at things that, as they are constructed, because we have other things we're responsible for during the day.
Absolutely.
Understood.
Yeah, and just to add on that, we, we have had meetings with the con- conservation commission, we had one Tuesday, we have a site meeting with them on Saturday.
Yes.
And we hope to resolve the issues with them in the next few weeks here. It's been ongoing back and forth with the downtown engineer Beals and Thomas and our internal engineer. So we're, we're working through that process and I know that's not discussion now, but it came up, so I wanna just let you, let you all know that.
And just so I'm absolutely clear, I get slower and slower the older I get here. Do we, with the documents that are in place, do we have the ability to leverage that sixty thousand dollars to get deficient work corrected?
Um, from what I read it, I believe so, however, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, neither am I.
The, the, the only guarantee I could, I could suggest is the fact that you already have it for the decommissioning, it was accepted, it was, it's in place. So in other words, you can leverage that if, if we, so I don't see why we couldn't do the same with the five years.
We're, we're beginners at these projects. You know, we've, we've had quite a number of them that have been proposed and, and very few of them that have been built. I mean, that, that second, this second phase on winged lane has been kicking around for how many years?
Ten anyway.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're, we're kinda learning as we go along.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we, we, we certainly, from my perspective, I love to see the solar panels, anything we can generate from the sun instead of natural gas or, or oil. There are, I don't think there are any coal plants left in Massachusetts, but, uh, they spent like a, I, I, I heard it was close to a billion dollars to build those, those cool, massive cooling towers in Fall River.
Oh gee.
And, and two years later, they tore them down and that's just, it's, it's a shame to spend that, those kind of resources on things like that. I, I like, I like to, I like to see them up, but I, I do like to see, uh, a little cooperation between the developer and, and our townspeople that we look at.
We understand that perfectly.
To inspect these things. I, and, and quite honestly, again, we have not seen that, uh, in, in the past with this project. You know, there were a number of issues that came up. I, I, I'm, I'm glad that we've got them all resolved. I would certainly be in favor of lifting a cease and desist order. I, I would like some kind of read of the document.
By?
By somebody in town, not me. But somebody who's, who's got the ability to understand what it all means and make sure that we have the leverage that we need to get dead plants taken care of and, and, you know, any other thing relative to the construction taken care of. I understand that the conservation commission, uh, is going to quote, "take over" the detention basin responsibility. But I mean, that was originally part of our permit and I do feel a, an obligation of some kind to, uh, you know, keep them on the hook for correcting that situation. That's just from my, my end.
David, you had something you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what, what kind of plants did you plant between the arborvitae?
There's, um, a number, a couple different species out there. Um, there are, and excuse, I'm not sure if I'm gonna pronounce these correctly. Um, well, there's eastern red cedars, there's American hollies, there's mountain laurels, and then there's green giant unglies.
Are those the ones that are about eighteen inches high, maybe two feet?
Uh, which, which one?
All the photos that you've supplied me, it's consistent with what I saw in the field, um, before you put the screening on the fence up.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I love what you guys did with the slats
Yep.
down that driveway for that neighbor. I, I like the temporary green screening, but I don't know how this, this planting that you have out there, do you intend to do more in the spring?
More plantings? No, we, we do not intend on doing any more plantings than what's in there.
I think you guys need to go take a look at this because when you look at the photos, it's what it looks like. Once this temporary stuff around the fence is gone in two or three years, they said it's got two or five year life.
Five year, above five year life, man. The slats have like a twenty.
Even if these trees that are planted, they're like ten feet on center. And right now they're four, five, maybe some are six, I don't know, but I'm saying.
The arborvitae's are about, but they're, they're in a staggered arrangement. And so I think part of this whole thing, and we've kind of uncovered this cause we've had some new people in and out of this project over the years. And we have, um, a correspondence with Jim Merritt that was done through one of his previous colleagues. And there was a change in the, the layout of the screening. Um, it was through the pollinator program and that's how it came about. And so originally on the site plans, you'll see the arborvitae's just in a straight line on the site plan as proposed. There was a change and they were staggered and they were also additional species added. Now, we had dug back through old emails and tried to retrace this because it had come up through this whole, you know, uh, process. And we had sent over, or CVE had sent over basically the new proposed pollinator program with the staggered layout and the new species. And we, it was approved by, by Jim Merritt. He sent a letter to us, signed by him and says, "Akushnit has approved the new pollinator arrangement of the trees." I actually have it.
Because they saw, they saw.
The response.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Valid.
Well, that's.
The planning board makes it, approves a plan. We have a plan on record that says four feet on center, six feet tall, all evergreen. I look at these photos, I mean, I don't even think I call them Charlie Brown trees in between the arborvitae's. They, they look like they're this big. How, if, if that stuff you have on the fence disintegrates in three years, you're gonna see eighty percent of the panels. I don't know how you guys, I don't know how you meet the screen.
So we have, the guarantee that you have is that, at, within five years, we, we're gonna have complete screening with the trees.
That's what the, the bond, the, the cash will go.
So in other words, if, for some reason.
Hey, but, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but four or five years from now, the outside's disintegrated and now we see, okay, the, the arborvitae's are healthy there. But this, you got car, you know, car with gaps between them, everything else is all little and die. What do we do in five years when the bond's up?
So the, the, the bond, the bond guarantees that the trees, it's the way they're planted right now will provide the complete visual barrier in fi- within five years. So if within a year or two of those.
What happens in five years if it doesn't and the bond expires?
The thing is, within the next two years or so, we're gonna see how these plants are growing. And then it's, if some of them die, you know, or we feel like they're not growing, then we're just gonna replace them. The intent is that we're gonna have that visual barrier within five years. So whether with those trees or others that we're gonna plant, we just don't see the need of doing it right now. Because it's, we understand that these trees are supposed to grow and then they're supposed to, to widen to the, and then they're in a staggered, uh, pattern where they should be able to provide the whole.
I get the concept, I'm just concerned that, uh, uh, is your outfit gonna be here five years from now? Or is it possible you could sell this farm off to somebody else?
Yeah, but the bond, the bond stays with the project.
Okay.
Yes. So in other words, if that.
I'm concerned, I guess, I guess, my point is, why not just put the screening in now, the way the plan was approved? Even if it means wait until April, I know it's the winter time, so that we have something that is already there. This is, this is nothing.
These trees are like about four feet tall right now, I mean, not all of them.
The, the arborvitae's are, are taller.
The arborvitae's are healthy.
Yeah, those, those look good all around.
Instead of four feet on center, like ten, you got these Charlie Brown shrubs.
The stagger. Yeah, some of them are a little shorter.
It's gonna take them ten years.
But I, I don't.
Before anything. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm just not on board with it. To me, three or four years from now, all that screen is gonna be gone and you're gonna be able to see the whole thing.
I do think that those, you know, the smaller shrubs haven't really had a growth season at all yet either, you know, neither have the arborvitae's really. But, you know, they haven't experienced a, a good growth season and I think, you know, in the next few years, like you said, they will.
It's not enough of the arborvitae's, that's the problem.
If, if they're not, we're gonna plant more. That's just, that's just, that's, that's what we're committing to the, to the town. And again, to answer your, your question.
Asking for the change? Is that, you're asking for the change in the planting?
No, no, I mean, that, that was done, well, I, I don't know the date, but that was done a long time ago. Uh, like last year, um, well, I know last year was about a month ago, but very early last year, um, before the project was constructed really. So that's part of the reasoning, because, you know, we had gotten into this and we started looking into it more and, you know, that was one of the questions that came up. Was, you know, why was there a change? And, and it was for, the reasoning for the different species is to, to adhere to the pollinator program. That's the whole, that's the whole concept there behind some of the other trees not being arborvitae's.
And the town saw some, some, some benefit into that.
In the pollinator program, that's what we have.
For the biodiversity, there will be some benefits to it.
Oh, when you say town, you wanna talk about planting or what?
No, no, we're talking to Mr. Jamel, I believe.
I, I'm not sure if the proper.
You know, I just, I don't want to interrupt, but see, our, our problem is, when we went through this process and there was the berm that was originally proposed with the six-foot-high trees, four-foot on center. That's basically what we promised to the neighbors, okay? That hasn't happened, you know, and, you know, I, I understand what you're saying about the bond, the cash surety and all that. But it, it needs, if you want a variation from the six-foot-high plants, four feet on center, you need to ask for that and we need to approve it. And I, from my end, part of the condition of the approval is, is that if what you have done is not sufficient to provide continuous visual screening from the project, then based on, on what we purported to the neighbors that we would guarantee, I wanna make sure we can do that. And, and that goes down to the document, how much money we have leverage on to get some additional planting done if it's required. Uh, and, and it all ties into, if you wanna do something different from that plan, I mean, that's what was promised to the community. That's what was promised to the neighbors. You need to ask for it. It needs to be a specific ask and, and then.
Not to interrupt you, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What the gentleman is saying is they got a letter from Jim Merritt saying everything was okay.
Yeah, well, he, he addresses it to Christian. This is, this is the letter if you guys.
Well, that's.
Does that pollinator program also tell them what the spacing is gonna be between the trees too? Is, is that, is there a limit on that?
No, I think.
Are we talking just about the kind of tree?
Species type.
Part of that problem is, it's a different program with different priorities. Our prior, my priority is.
Screening.
I approved a project, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And I promised that, that, to the neighbors, that the screening would be in conformance with the plan. And if it wasn't, then the planning board would make sure that it was. That's, that's my, my personal problem, you know, I, I.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think the wrong process was taken for this approval.
If I want to change that original plan, you need to come in with another plan, with plants shown, with spacing shown and a document that lets the planning board use their discretion that if in four or five years, there is not a continuous visual barrier between the neighboring properties, you know, and that facility, then we need to get something else done.
Yeah.
And we need to have the ability to leverage money to get it done.
And, and this is why, why, why we're here and we appreciate that you, you, you gave us the chance to, to be here to propose not only to reinforce the way that our commitment that we're here to do the right thing. Because like you said, we promised that we're gonna have visual barrier and that's what we're gonna do. Unfortunately, during the process and the pollinator program that must, there's the smart program allowed basically created a little bit of vagation from the original plan. And it, it was back and forth between Mr. Merritt and, and, and our prior, uh, previous, uh, project management team. And that's why we have what we have now. But we still have that same commitment that we, we, we're gonna have a complete visual barrier to the site. And we're doing everything we can because we want to be in good terms with the town, with the board, because we're here to stay for twenty years. So we, we're not gonna back away from that.
I, I, I understand and, and unfortunately, you know, we've been in the enforcement position before. I just want to make sure that the documents and the plans are in place so that if it doesn't look right, we have the ability. And, and it might, again, it might not be you. For all I know, in five years, it's gonna change hands five times.
And that's why we're guaranteeing to you tonight, by not only showing you what we've done, uh, as, as an intermediate solution, but also guaranteeing that you will have that visual barrier when we are there. Because we, we're putting money in place for it. If for some reason those trees will die within the three months, we're gonna replant all of them. Because we put the money there for that. And, and, and we've already calculated on how much it's cost us, fifty-four thousand, we even added ten, ten percent more to make sure that we will be able to, to meet the, the, so in other words, we feel like we're committing, we're committing, uh, not only with words and then with the plan we have in front of you, but with the, with the cash to make sure, to guarantee that you have that, the confidence that it will be done. And we, all, all we're asking is that, take, take, get, take that commitment from us, not just by words, but with the surety that we're gonna, uh, comply with the requirements. And then only lift the cease and desist so we can continue on with the project and, and move along because, because this, this will be done. And it, or it, it has been done as much as we can for, so far.
I, I, I understand and, and again, my, I've just gotta hand it over to the administrative part of the town to review the document, but without, without a quote, "approved". We had an approved plan. We don't have an approved plan anymore. It's because what's been done, you know, like Mr. DeVignan says, when, when I look at that berm and those plants, I don't see a visual barrier. You know, and that's, that's, that's part of my problem. If you wanna do something different, you've gotta get somebody to put it on a plan so that five years from now, whoever owns it, we can say, hey, no, this is the plan we approved, it's not hap- it hasn't happened. We need you to either fix it or we're gonna pull the bond and do what we can do to get some better visual screening in there. That's all. I mean, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I, I want you guys to start generating power. It's, 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 I, I really do. It's, it's, it's less fossil fuel that has to be used to generate.
We, we, we believe you. We believe you. Right now, you have that, you have that confidence, you have that energy.
I don't see a plan. I don't see, I don't see a plan that's different from the one that we originally approved. I don't see it. I have words, I, there's a few pictures there, but we've got a big site, you know.
Well, with all due respect, I mean, this was, you know, the, the sites, how it, how it was installed, everything's in there. Layouts, you know, all the foundations, the pads, the equipment, the poles, everything's the same. You know, the only thing that changed is this, is this screening layout. And, I mean, I, I understand it's not the correct procedure and I wasn't the one who went through this process, but, you know, Jim Merritt approved it on behalf of the town of Acushnet. He writes in his letter. The town of, on behalf of Acushnet, we're happy that you're substituting for pollinator plantings and I get that, but.
He may have overstuffed his.
He might have, I, I agree.
That doesn't mean that we have to follow it.
No, I agree, but I, all I'm trying to say is that there was obviously an understanding from the project team at the time that the substitution was acceptable by the town of Acushnet. Now, whether or not Jim Merritt should have came to the planning board or whether or not us, we should have, someone from our, one of our teams should have come to the planning board, yes. You know, we agree. But I think, you know, we're, we're in the situation where we're in now and we're trying to fix it the best we can with the screening and we're trying to fix it with cash on hand so that if something were to happen. And I feel as though, you know, we've done a, we've done a good job to, to rectify the issue as we are now and I feel as though Doug and Jim and everybody else in the field are, are okay with it. And so, we're, we're asking that, you know, the planning board get on the same page.
So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, what you would like to see is just a plan reflecting what is at the site.
A change. You know, if they're asking for a deviation, let's, let's get a plan that shows the deviation.
Okay, could you supply a plan that just shows what was done to the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Could the deviation be that, that we ha- we have the plan, the, the way they, they planted now and along with the modification we proposed?
We're gonna, we're gonna need a site plan to have on file with everything and then.
Yeah, absolut- like a site plan, or a revised site plan showing how the plantings are now, like an Azbouli type.
I'd like a, should be specific.
Like with the species and so forth?
May I, may I ask of the board one favor? That we're gonna provide all that, but could we at least get that cease and desist released so we can continue working? And there, there's, there's not, there's not, we, we already have leverage with what we're proposing, with the money we're putting in place. And if it's a site that shows the current installation, we're gonna, we, I mean, Doug, I've been working with you on this for the, for most, everything you ask of, of us, we provide, we try our best.
Yes, extremely.
When you say lift the cease and desist, is that to continue work or is that to connect to the grid?
To, to connect to the grid, to do the, the actual.
And once you connect to the grid, what leverage do we have to make you do anything?
We'll just put this in the cease.
We have to get the special permit signed off, you know, from you guys for us to finish financing for the project in general. You know, there's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars hinged on top of that planning board sign off.
And the, the more, the more the process.
There's a big interest for us and for them to, to get that sign off.
I'm amenable to working with the people, my, from my end, but to considering the difficulty we had in getting things done on the earlier part of the project. I need a document in place that our administration is satisfied, gives us leverage to get that visuals. The visual screen is the, one of the biggest things that we have any control over. We can't tell you how high the panels are gonna be, what direction they face. You know, and it, I suppose we could tell you can't take trees down that are shading it, but that's, you know, that's, we're, we're not, we're not going there. That's a very, although it's not important to the operation of the facility, that's important to me personally and the neighbors that surround.
And, and we understand that.
Plan, a document in place that gives us leverage to assess the visual barrier at the end of five years and, and get money to improve it if we desire.
Okay. Now, now that you have act- at least a visual barrier at the moment at the site, while we work to provide the plan, to have this thing situated, all, all I'm asking is that we ha- we're allowed to continue the apparel process to get the plan done. Because you already have the leverage, because you could put the cease and desist next week if I, if I don't.
Can I ask you a question?
I, I mean, I, you know, that, that's a, that's, that's a valid, that's a valid point. We don't wanna do a cease and desist order. Again, you know, we just, we just want this to be built, we want the neighbors to be happy and we want you to get revenue from generating power. Uh, we, we don't, we don't wanna have a continuous run of, of cease and desist. If we have, if we, if we have a plan.
Cease and desist, if the cease and desist is lifted, that gives you the right to connect the grid. Am I correct?
And, and continue the process of.
It's just, it gives you the right to connect to the grid.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
So that's where our challenge is. They wanna connect to the grid, the planning board wants you to get all the stuff done with the screening, okay? The only one that can enforce a cease and desist order is the zoning enforcement officer, Jim Merritt, am I correct? He's the only one that can lift the cease and desist 'cause he put it on there.
No, we, we.
We, 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 we're in granting authority. We issued it.
Okay.
And, and the, at that point, the building commissioner or the zoning enforcement officer, officer is, uh.
He's the one who hands it out.
I, I, I don't wanna say required, that's a strong word, but he's required to go along with our cease and desist, uh, order.
So in essence, what they're asking for, what the planning board, what you're asking for, Rick, is we wanna site plan review of how all the trees and everything are going with the money. I know you put the money in, in the bond and all that other stuff. Before we release the cease and desist for them to hook into, have a source.
You know, in, in terms of moving it forward, I mean.
No, I understand. Once they hook the grid up, they don't have to worry about nothing else.
The reason I'm smiling, I mean, they, they, they are correct. I mean, we tell them everything's okay, go connect to the grid.
Yep.
They connect to the grid, they start generating income. We issue another cease and desist order because they still haven't done their landscaping. I just want the documents in place that we can access the money to get it done. That's all. I mean, it's as simple, as simple as that. We, I don't know that we have that. We're not lawyers, we haven't reviewed the document. Uh, and, and, and we haven't approved any alteration to the screening plan that we originally improve, approved. That's where we're coming from. Five years later, it, it doesn't mature the way you said it's supposed to. Half the plants die off. We pull out the plan, say, well, this is what was supposed to happen, it didn't happen. We, we, we need the documents.
Yes, I understand.
Because we don't know who we're gonna be dealing with five years out.
I understand that.
That's all. And, and, and I think you should be able to put together the plan. We can get the document, the bonding document review.
I'll have that before next meeting.
And I don't see why we can't act on it on our next meeting. I really don't. I mean, that's.
We're all settled then, right?
No, yeah, if you guys need stuff from us, you know, documents to finalize stuff.
Hey, I have another question. What happens if stormwater, you have stormwater issue, right?
So.
When will you resolve the wetland line? Because if things have to be moved.
There's no, uh, no issue with wetland lines or anything. No. So if, I can give you guys like a quick summary of what exactly happened.
I'd like to know.
We understand with it, just so we understand.
So, and I, I don't, by no means am I pointing fingers at anybody, at anybody involved in this at all, and I was not involved in this process. So, there are additional Acushnet stormwater bylaws that go above and beyond Massachusetts requirements for stormwater regulation and design. The bylaws were never enforced by anybody from the town of Acushnet and they were also never picked up on by any of the engineers who designed the project. So, it was a combination of, you know, engineers not looking into specific town bylaws and also enforcement agencies not enforcing. So, the plans went through, okay? They were submitted to the planning board, they were submitted to the, the building inspector as part of the building permit application. There's a spot for the conservation commission to look at the design and sign off on. That was all signed off on. And Pat Hannan came in and he seems to be fixing and picking up some issues from previous, you know, years or whatever else and he picked up on it and he said, where are the stormwater checklists? Where is the stormwater certification, et cetera, et cetera? And so, we, we looked into it and we submitted what we had thought was, you know, adhering to the state requirements, basically. Um, as part of that, we're going back, we're doing some additional soil testing, we're taking topography and we're working with Beals and Thomas to adhere to the regulations, which the site should adhere to anyways with the, with the current design. But that was essentially what, what happened. There was a miss in the regulations and it wasn't enforced and it wasn't picked up on until Pat Hannan came in.
And we understand.
And I saw, but I've seen the letter, it's pretty extensive, like five pages long.
There's, there's twenty-nine bullets. Um, you know, a handful of them are related to topography and a altered plan set, which we have, that'll be submitted. We're, we're planning on submitting, uh, to them at the end of this week. Our engineer is submitting to Beals and Thomas and we hope to, a lot of them should be fixed based on the next one.
Okay. It'd be good to have that resolved, isn't it?
We're, we're hop- we're hoping to have it resolved by next meeting.
Okay, so when you bring that.
If we could get that resolved, have a plan.
When we have a plan, revise plan in with the new plantings, it's all together?
May, may I?
In matches?
I, I understand, I understand the stormwater is a separate issue from the cease and desist itself. I, I, I would like, I would ask the board if we could keep that separate so we don't make the decision on the cease and desist before the stormwater.
I don't know, we can though, because if, we have evidence.
Because, because I understand that.
We have evidence in our file that there are twenty-nine bullet items, it's pretty significant. If there were changes to the back, the lower part of the project, closest to the wells where your stormwater system is, then our plans that this board approves should be revised and reflective under any amendment for the plantings. It should, it all ties together.
The, the plans, the plans on the site plan.
If you're saying nothing's gonna change whatsoever, other than some paper swapping back and forth with the peer review engineer by stormwater, okay. But we should get that documentation to prove that.
Yeah, you will get.
We don't want plans being revised after you bring a set of plans showing what you wanna do with plantings.
No, the basin, the basin on the site plans is the same as what it was as approved from the planning board. There was no, no changes in that, in the stormwater, in the basin anyways.
Okay.
So, it, it more or less could be a paperwork thing, as, as long as everything, it meets the regulations and, you know, well.
That's what I wanna see. I'm gonna be happy with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm happy with your decommissioning, I mean, your, uh, bond for the plantings. I think it's great. I'm just not sold on the screening as being adequate. What I'd like to see myself is, when you come in with a plan and you show all these little tiny bushes, I mean, unless those things are gonna grow two foot a year, you know, in three years, we're not, they're not gonna screen anything but my ankles. So.
I understand that.
You know, the plan should say, all of these little guys are gonna be replaced in the spring by something else, in my opinion, in order to, I don't think you're gonna accomplish the screen, you know, uh, I, however it went sideways a year ago, it's, it's watering the bridge.
Right.
This is, there's no way that this is gonna meet anything in five years. It's not gonna meet the threshold unless, what you have for little shrubs, even if they're.
May, may, may I ask the board, are you satisfied with the temporary screening that we have now?
No.
Well, the temporary.
The temporary.
Well, temp- the, the temporary one is, is fine, but in terms of, of, you know, the long-term, what it's gonna look like.
Actually buy us time for the next couple of weeks just to at least implement and provide the plan that you, that you, that you need in order to be completely satisfied. Can we at least say that we have a visual barrier now?
Yes, I, I, I think it looks okay.
In which case, I feel like, can we not have a cease and desist if we have a visual barrier?
What they're trying to say is they don't want the cease and desist.
Yeah, I, I, I know, and then they're gonna say.
Because, because it hap- we understand.
Well, I mean, there's no cease and desist technically right now, right?
Like I said, we, we, we committed, we committed to do.
Maybe, maybe this whole, this whole discussion should have happened, you know, four, six months ago when we started to have problems during construction. You know, I.
Okay.
It, it, it's, it's kinda one of those things, I mean, it, there was plenty of time available to iron out all these things.
We, we understand, we're not.
Easily in, in a non-confrontational manner, but.
We're not, we're not working.
I'm not satisfied right now. Unfortunately, there's a track record there that I'm not happy with. I mean, even the detention basin. I mean, what I heard from conservation was that a lot of the bigger rocks were just rolled into the detention basin. You know, that, that shows a lack of care and a lack of, of, of respect of, of what the, the permit process was. May or may not be correct. I want plans, I want documents in place. Uh, in terms of keeping the things separate, uh, you know, I, I would like to hear from our conservation commission what their current take on the situation is before our next, before our next meeting, you know.
The stormwater board.
The stormwater board, yeah.
So, yeah, so one of the same.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, we have a meeting onsite with them Saturday and we, we hope to have the, the issues resolved shortly. It's, at, at this point, it's in the hands of Beals and Thomas, though the town engineer, and I don't know if Pat has, has much to.
I hope it's correct. I would ask that you keep our, our town planner abreast of the situation.
They've, they've had a great job, though, absolutely.
Okay.
We, we have, we have been in good communication. I understand there's, there is a past, like you said, things were not done correctly. And what we've decided to do is to make sure that we're on top of things, because we realize it slows us down, it, it does, if we don't satisfy you. So in other words, we don't, we don't have any, 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 any benefit in defi- defying you or in being in defiance to what you want. So, so we're doing a hundred percent of everything you asked that we can to, to advance the project so we don't have this kind of problems. And I've, I've been working with Doug and we communicate weekly and I, I try to understand what, what's required, what the body's requiring of us or trying to comply. We, I work with our contractor to do it, to do everything. But we just feel like there is a heavy burden on us to move the project, even though we're actually doing a lot to satisfy what you want.
I, I, with all due respects, or, I mean, I mean, and, and if, if, if there were six-foot-high plants, four feet on center, we probably wouldn't even be having this discussion.
By the way, the project, the plan is for four feet, four feet high trees, not our two-foot.
Whatever the plans, whatever the plan showed.
Yeah.
I thought, what was the, what was the original plan?
It's two, two-foot berm.
Two-foot berm, four-foot. It's a total of six feet, so it's four feet, which is on top of two-foot berm.
Four-foot trees, four-foot on center.
Okay.
Four-foot berm.
No, that's, that's the one you just did for us. Which was a good idea, by the way. I, I would recommend that, but.
You guys, we're gonna, you got thirty days, okay? Here's what we're gonna do. You're not gonna get the cease and relist, they're not gonna let it go, no matter what. The cease and desist is gonna stay on till you do what you gotta do. Okay, I understand, yes, you want the cease and desist off. These guys want all the things put together. We're here for the benefit of the town.
So, just, sorry, sorry to cut you off. Just so I'm clear on my end, when, when we're communicating between now and our next meeting, what would satisfy the board in order to have the cease and desist removed on our end of things is to hear from conservation, um, a updated site plan reflecting the, the current screening that's on the site.
Yes.
And then a, uh, official wa- um, waiver request.
And a, a document acceptable to the administration that gives us leverage to fix the visual screen if it's not doing what it's purported to do in five years.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody.
I think we're on the same page.
You can beat this around for another hour if you want.
No, no, that's, I'd rather, you know, start taking tree species names.
Doug is, we just brought Doug on, he's doing a phenomenal job.
Yes.
We should, Doug, Doug is.
Very helpful, thank you, Doug.
We understand completely and, uh, next meeting will be February seventeenth.
Okay, great. And maybe we can talk about across the street at that meeting as well.
Don't throw any blades in the fire.
Well, the more things you throw in there, the more difficult the yes gets. So, you know, you do what, you do what you need to do to get your, your, your whole project tied in and producing clean electricity for, as I say, Massachusetts.
Guys, anything else?
Nope, all set.
All set, you sure? Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, folks. All right. Have a good evening.
Moving on. Are you on plan or update, Tom?
I, I just have, I have one quick comment. This is from Mr. Francois. I guess I'm talking today. Now, what is the avenue that we need to take to make the developer happy and the neighbors happy? There was discretion involved here.
The developer's happy?
I, I, it's, it's a rhetorical question. I don't, I don't expect an answer to it, but, see, that's the situation.
This project is not.
But, but that's a situation we find ourselves in. You know, maybe not every meeting, but time after time is the, the desires of the neighbors and the desires of the developer and rarely are they the same. Uh, and, and.
If these guys hadn't screwed up in the beginning, it would've.
It would've been easier.
It would've been to the last six months.
If they would've did what was on the plans originally, there wouldn't be, wouldn't be this problem.
That all said. Probably not talking about it right now.
And if they wanted to change it, then they, like the rule says, you submit a new plan with changes, which is what they didn't do. And now they need to do it.
But now they need to, yeah.
Just to break down a communication along the way.
Yeah, I, I, I've, I've got it on the other end of those, but I, I, that's my planning board story, or my conservation commission story that I told you on site a while ago.
Yes.
You know, in terms of, of the desires of the permitting authority, the desires of the neighbors, and the desires of the developer.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, I'm very familiar with it, everything changes, nothing stays the same.
Yeah, so, I'll just go really quick, um, we'll get meeting minutes out of the way first, so, everybody had a coffee in the meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to accept meeting from November eighteenth and December sixteen, twenty twenty-one minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous.
I'm just gonna need those signed, but-
And leave them here, right? Yes, please.
Is this just the chairman signing, or do we have to all sign?
Uh, just, just-
Okay, cool.
I'll start from, I guess, like, the middle one. I guess, so budget, budget season's coming up, I'm supposed to meet with the FinCom next week. Looking at if you guys had any recommendations on any, any new-
Enough money to keep you in office. And, and, and a-
Thank you.
And a secretary.
Yes, absolutely.
We have fall, we have debt.
I guess this would be a decent time to bring it up, it'd be the zoning enforcement, of, as we, I guess, kinda saw tonight, it was, it was a little bit of a challenge on some projects. I don't know if it's necessarily the, the planning board who appoints the zoning enforcement, but it is, um, something I'd be interested in as a planner. I feel like it would help me out in terms of creating new bylaws or reworking the bylaw languages and actually seeing how it's playing out in, in field and what, what it's doing to the town. Just kinda something I wanted to, to just keep on the board's, board's radar.
Say that again, just so I understand what your, what the request is?
Um, I, I just like, uh, opinions on me taking over zoning enforcement or pursuing that-
Only for planning board?
For the planning board.
Planning board projects?
Yes.
So, I think what he's saying is that, as they rated the problems with the building inspector doing the planning board's planning and enforcement-
That was all prior to Doug being Doug's knowledge plan.
Right, right, so, it, does it make more sense for him to be the inspector of the planning board projects?
Or, or maybe zoning enforcement is the wrong term, maybe the enforcement officer for planning board-related projects.
Okay, yep, that's, that, that makes more sense.
You, you, you don't really wanna be the zoning, believe me.
It tells a lot of different things, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. You don't want me telling Mr. Francois that he can't have a building permit for one of his, uh-
No, we're gonna ignore him, not that, we'll, we'll listen to a hard pass.
You may not get your vote for the zoning enfor-, or the, uh, the enforcement official for planning board projects in that case.
And the last thing, and I don't know if you'd like to step out of this?
Yeah, if you're gonna have a discussion, I'll step out.
I, 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 I would, I would like to set aside time at the next meeting for, uh, some discussion about access requirements for Form A plans.
Okay, I can put that, I'll have the, on the-
That, that, uh, that I would like to do.
Okay.
And, and try and get it, uh, more in line with what, what I, well, what I believe to be the, uh, the requirements of, of, the, the planning board's requirements for signature of a Form A plan and what it means in terms of actual access to the building portion of the lot.
Okay.
I mean, I gave you a little precursor to that before the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
And I, I'll take time to, uh, I'd just like some time set aside in front of the board at a meeting to interject that, uh,
So, just for the, for the-
That stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna step off of the conversation we got at that next meeting, aye?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll get up and just give a-
Not now, no.
No.
Thinking of that clock, five minutes, what are we still doing here?
What time is it?
It's actually quarter past eight. My Apple tells me twelve minutes past eight.
Just wanted to give, uh, the board a brief update on the, um, proposed bylaw for the special residential development that we've been talking about. Believe I informed the board at the last meeting that we were considering, the pro-, uh, prospective project is, would be comfortable doing fifty percent age qualified, I've started to put language together and I've gave you the paperwork for, for the language that's been put together. Essentially looking for an alternate use within the business commercial district. And a lot, a, a few different things have happened since this draft was created. So first, it would just be, if you look on the second page, um, under use by special permit from the planning board in the business commercial district, um, I would be looking at the additional use of the special residential development units. Some of the language is still trying to, we're still working on being finalized, but-
Oh, I'm looking at the package, sorry.
Say that one, what you just said, please, Doug?
So, we're, what, realistically, what we're looking at is a additional use within the business commercial district to allow, allow age qualified and a little denser housing, I guess, in an area of the town that already has denser housing. So, essentially, what we're looking at would be an eighth item under the use by special permit from the planning board, uh, that'd be the special residential development, uh, units, um, after having some conversations after this, this was drafted. The administrative side and the, I guess, uh, the regulate, regulatory side of it, aspect of it, that would be, fall under the planning, planning board rules and regulations, and I'm gonna be working on drafting language for that as well. Um, I have met with John Markey on this matter, who, um, as you know, represents Rick Miller. He had some questions regarding the language, if we would rather see it be restricted to duplexes, or if three to four, three to four unit townhouses would be something that is an option for the, for the bylaw language itself. What else is there? Oh, yes, and then another area of concern would be the, uh, number of units in comparison to the buildable, uh, number of bedrooms. So, how that relates to the buildable, buildable area of land. So which one would we rather focus on, would be the number of bedroom units per buildable acre, or the number of, um, sorry, the number of units per buildable acre, the number of bedrooms per buildable acre. And I believe one of the, the areas that was highlighted by, um, John Markey was that restricting it to bedrooms per buildable acre wouldn't really meet the density that his client would be looking at achieving. Um, I also don't think it would meet the density for, for that area that we would be looking to, to hit. Just to meet the age qualification of fifty percent of the units meeting that, and then also having the affordable units, um, aspect to it. Um, so I just, any, any feedback from the board or any direction they would like to see the bylaw heading?
Well, I mean, I, obviously, I, I'm not sure that we'd be crazy about a, a twenty-story, uh, you know, apartment complex.
No, I think we're, we were restricting it to two floors, thirty-five feet max, which is, um, I, I, pretty standard for what's already in that district and area, what's in that area, yeah?
The regulations I know.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I, with that, with that kind of restriction, I mean, that's going to be part and parcel to restricting the number of bedrooms that you can have there. Unless you carve up each floor into like six by six cubicles that, uh, you know, will fit a bed, right?
And this is only in the business commercial district, correct?
Uh, yes, yes, it'd be the additional use of the business commercial district. Um, and then from there, if the town sees this as an advantage, um, or something that is an asset to them, we can start targeting other locations of the town to, to seek further development.
Yeah, I mean, there's not, there's, there aren't a lot of areas in town that have the, have the sewer and water availability and the, and the land-
Yes.
That, uh, that work with this kind of thing. Now, what about, you know, down in that area, just the Rivers Act, is that gonna have an application on what can be done down there?
In terms of the, the river itself?
Well, no, I mean, the Rivers Act restricts, restricts, uh, building, uh, within the hundred-foot zone and within the two-hundred-foot zone in certain, uh, instances. I'm just, it, it's not a, a planning board issue, but I'm just, uh, curious as to how, uh, how the Rivers Act is gonna get interpreted for a project that's that close to the Acushnet River.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, after it's, it's been cleaned up too.
Uh, it, a lot, some of it's selfish, I just don't wanna go through the whole procedure, and then they find out that, well, the Rivers Act says you can only do X, so-
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's actually a good point, thank you.
I mean, there is, there are provisions in the Rivers Act for previously developed areas, which most likely this would fall, and I just wanna make sure they're aware of it.
Okay, yeah.
And that, that, that's not gonna be a project stopper on their end.
Okay, yeah, I, I know I saw the, at least the wetland or the, the setback from the river that was required. And they had a decent amount of buildable area still allotted, and then with the combination of the transfer development rights by law, the other land that they would be transferring to the town would give them the buildable area that Rick would feel comfortable-
That I, I understand, I mean, it's a whole separate, it's a whole separate permitting process. There's an inner riparian zone, an outer riparian zone, and, and some very restrictive language, particularly on what you can do within the inner riparian zone. And if it was just a, if it was just a, a wooded area, I would say you're probably in real trouble.
Okay, okay, that's good to know.
Just, just, just make sure they're aware of it, and be prepared to, uh, at least tell us how they intend to handle that situation.
Okay.
If it, if it needs to be handled at all, you know, again, I've been out of that business for almost fifteen years now, so things change.
Okay, I'll have to check into that and, and see where they're at with that, and then I'm gonna keep working on drafting language for this and other bylaws. I did contact Rochester, as you guys have requested, and, and see what they do for paperwork, and a lot of good ideas I've, I'm gonna start taking from their office and implementing in our office. I really like, they, they actually worked with the Buzzards Bay, uh, I wanna say the Buzzards Bay Coalition? I think they, I think it was them, but they generated a map for, for them with the location name, of all the solar projects they have going on in Rochester, um, and just like the status that they're at in the plant, in the, in the planning process. And also, something else I would be looking at for next year would be, very well, the part of the bylaw for the, the solar field would be, um, a yearly, um, pretty much just a yearly review of the energy efficiency of the solar field, so the town understands how efficient they are.
I, I would, I would love to see something, you're, you're, you're well on your way.
Okay.
And, and that was the reason that I requested it, is, you know, we're kind of beginners in this town at this stuff. There are other towns out there that are not beginners, and have, and if, if somebody's already figured out the way around a problem, I'm all for it.
Okay, all right, we're heading in the right direction now.
Okay. Thank you for, for doing that, that research.
Oh, yeah, no, I actually had a great conversation with her, she is, she's gonna be a great asset, I think I'm gonna have future conversations in terms of other issues we have going on. I know I spoke to Jim, uh, me and Jim were planning at some point, we were gonna go grab, um, lunch with a for Haven planner too, so, just kinda make some connection to the background.
Yeah, and for Haven, Dartmouth, uh, Rochester, yeah, I mean, it, that's kind of a newer one, but, yeah. Anybody that's, that's had to deal with these issues in the past.
Been around the block a couple of times.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
With that, gentlemen, is there anything else?
I need, uh, Dave back to make the final motion.
Yep.
Dave?
You could've turned without me.
That's what I was hoping, but he wanted you in. He said he loves the new guy. With that, our next meeting will be February seventeenth, you'll put the agenda and everything all together, Doug?
Yeah, absolutely, have everybody, the agenda put together. Um, I will include the A and R, um, language as part of the discussion for the next meeting.
Yeah, just, just, as, like I said, it's just a discussion issue at this point.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if you want Doug to give you guys, uh, minutes, or if you can email to, or email easier?
It can just be emailed to me, I mean, I check my email constantly, so-
Okay, I can start emailing, but, uh-
I'd like to be able to read it, but it, it helps me before I get here.
I need to, I, yeah, if you can just have me, and, and I'll give me my email too, it doesn't matter.
No, I, I have, I have the, your three, three emails.
You got everybody's emails, right?
Yeah, I have all of your emails. Um, I have, if you want the hard packet like that, I-
No, you can just send it off in the email.
Oh, yeah, okay, I can start.
Uh, just make it easy, I'm trying to make it easier on you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, then I'll start, I'll start sending an email to all the board members prior to the meeting with everything.
I want the hard packet though.
Uh, don't worry, you always have the hard, the hard packet. I, I know, I know the, I know the computer situation with that, yeah. The phone went down.
If, if it's possible, uh, uh, two days in advance would be marvelous. That gives me a chance to sit down, look it over carefully, and then, uh, come to the meeting.
Yeah.
At least a little prepared to talk about it.
Okay, I think my goal is gonna be-
If Mike, if Mike wants to give his email, you can, he'll-
I've got that and the phone number, so-
I presume you will be sworn in within the next thirty days?
I would assume, well, that's what I-
I know Pat's, uh, Pam is still out with, uh-
Oh, she's back in, she's back in the office, she's on one crutch now, so she's got, she's moving around pretty good.
You set up an appointment with her so you can get sworn in, then everything will be legal.
Absolutely.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything else?
All set.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
All in favor? I understand, you folks, have a great day.